We'll go ahead and open the City Council Work Session for October 15. We have one item on the agenda today, and that is to see if we can get to a public hearing on the multi-unit property tax exemption program revisions. So I'll turn it over to City Manager.
Thank you very much, and Danny and Amanda will lead us through a conversation.
Thank you. Our goal, as Counselor Pryor indicated, is to get Council's general agreement on MPT revisions. We've been talking about MPT for quite some time, so that they can be advanced for some additional public comment through a public hearing. It's important to note that this is not a final decision. We'd like, again, to send these revisions out. I'd also mention that previously, Council has suggested some kind of decision tool in order to get through the various criteria in the MPT program, and we've provided that, and we're prepared to go through kind of that decision guide, so to speak, on a kind of criteria-by-criteria basis today, if that's what Council's preference is. Before we get to that, though, I just want to just do a quick recap of how we developed the recommendations that are in the criteria that are before you today. If you recall, we started, and we looked at the Portland program, them having recently gone through some similar revisions, we started there. Our goal wasn't to replicate exactly what Portland has done, but we wanted to look kind of at our own specific market conditions, look at our own goals expressed through Envision Eugene and other local plans, and then we took elements from Portland's program that we thought worked for us. We adjusted some of them; we've added others that maybe aren't even in their program; and we eliminated some that maybe didn't or weren't applicable to our current market conditions here, because the markets are much different. We've had many conversations with Council; we've incorporated a lot of your input into these revisions. We went out for input from various stakeholder groups: developers, the Housing Policy Board, construction trades, green building interests, the Technical Resource Group, the TRG, neighborhoods. We've incorporated a lot of that input into these revisions. We've held three neighborhood events that were focused on what's important for the neighborhoods. We conducted surveys that were targeted towards the neighborhoods. We've incorporated a lot of those ideas and suggestions into the program. So the revisions you're kind of considering today are kind of the collective wisdom of many stakeholders and individuals that have contributed over almost a two-year kind of process that we've been under in this program. And it's safe to say that there's, you know, probably be some opinion that says we've loaded too much into the program; there's some opinion that would say we want to see more into the program. Our assessment really is, we've kind of made our best effort to incorporate as much public benefit as possible, and still make the program usable and effective in meeting some of our goals, and the goal really is redevelopment within the urban growth boundary. As we introduced, or as we discussed was introduced by Council, actually, the, are we introduced, I'm sorry, at the last work session, the idea of a recommendation to bring downtown back first, and then look at other corridor, Envision Eugene corridor areas as future opportunities to activate MPT into those areas. So again, our recommendation today is the first, let's put back downtown into activation, so to speak, for projects that would advance some of our goals downtown. Of course, we have a tremendous sense of a momentum downtown. Downtown is where we want to see density. We've planned for downtown a long time. It meets a lot of our kind of fundamental smart growth policies, so we obviously believe downtown is a really good place to start with MPT and pilot some of these new revisions. Just one other item that came up at the last work session around disqualification. There were a lot of questions that said, "Well, what if they didn't meet this criteria? What if they didn't meet that criteria?" The simple answer is, anything that we put into the program, and a criteria that's not met, that's adopted, if it's not met, is subject to disqualification. For example, if we have design guidelines in the program, and those designs aren't actually carried out in the projects, you, as a council, have the opportunity to disqualify those, and that, I think, across the board relates to all of the criteria. So when you're thinking about the criteria, and what happens if they don't meet it, I think the general answer is, you have the ability to disqualify those, and the city attorney could elaborate on that if you're interested. Again, we have this design guy idea where we can go through criteria by criteria. It's in Attachment C. Each criteria has its own page. We proposed a question; we've proposed our recommendation; we've proposed our rationale for that recommendation. And again, the goal really is to get Council to indicate their support for moving forward, so that, again, we can take this to the public for further comment. Had a lot of comments from stakeholders, but I guess the one thing that still remains is taking it out to the broader general public for comment, and that's really where we're trying to get.
Okay. What I want to try to do is have the needed discussion, try to keep that to about an hour, because I want to make sure that we have adequate time to talk about what we need to do if we want to get to a public hearing, and hopefully around a half an hour for that. So with that, I'll start with the first round. Mike?
Thanks, Chris. I appreciate all the work. I appreciate that this is a Hydra, and it's complex, and it's, you know, something that we've been working on forever. For me, a lot of the materials in the packet don't, I don't see, maybe I'm remembering it inaccurately, but they don't seem to match up with our last discussion very well for me. I remember us having a conversation around removing some of these areas from the potential list, for example, South Holam and Coburg, and I was under the impression that we had made that decision as a council already, but perhaps I'm mistaken about that. Either way, there are other pieces that we've discussed that I didn't see a reflected change or an option for that opportunity in the discussion here. And so I'll jump just straight, I don't know how you want to go through this one at a time, or, you know, what the best way to proceed is, but I'll jump straight into Criteria Five and talk about neighborhood engagement for a second, and say that one of the key parts for me in this is to have this, one of the public benefits that come out of someone using the MPT incentive should be a better way for us to see potential conflicts with neighborhood leaders, neighborhood, you know, active folks, and begin to identify a process to mitigate those impacts early on in the process of larger-scale development. So while I appreciate the idea of having a couple neighborhood people on an assessment group for an application, as I've said before, I think we should have, we don't have to eliminate that, but we should certainly have a neighborhood association that is impacted by a development, have an opportunity to review the application, and to score it in some fashion. Now, that doesn't mean they have the yea or nay on the application, but it means they're going to fill out a scoring sheet that comes to us before we make a decision, so we can see the neighborhood really thinks this about that particular development. And as well, I want to see those folks begin to identify, because we've talked about a funding piece in this with the SDCs, want to see them begin to identify a list of top three impacts, at least from the neighborhood's association's point of view, you know, this is their, the impact of their highest concern with regard to transportation, or parks, or what have you, and I'll do the second round.
Second round, okay. George?
Thank you, Council President. Yeah, I totally agree with that. I mean, you know, the neighborhoods, people are going to be involved, but in a way, I mean, it has no teeth. They have really very little, they can express opinions, but it won't necessarily change anything. I agree with a lot of what Counselor Clark just said. I'm going to kind of cut right to the chase here, and I want to go over some points where I think the attempted elimination of the 20% affordability requirement is a really bad idea. When I got on Council six years ago, the percentage of people in Eugene that were rent burdened was 40%, and I'm not saying that the city and all the various social service agencies don't do what they can do to address that problem. They have done a good amount. But now, six years later, and this is from the city's website, the percentage of people, residents, that are rent burdened is 60%. 60%, it's gone up 50%. We're falling behind in spite of all of the programs that we have in place. So, and MPT, up to this point, has not helped at all, and the city's forgone a lot of revenue through the years, and none of it, you know, it hasn't helped the, this terrible imbalance of people that are rent burdened. And the way the MPT is, this current, the way that it's structured now, it's not going to help the problem, really. I think it'll make it worse, because I believe that most of the investments will go to, will be projects that will be the upper end of the market rate, and I think they will be in high-value areas, and they won't go to where we would really like to see them. There've been some criticisms of this idea of the 20% requirement, affordable units. One criticism is, "Well, gosh, it only lasts for 10 years," you know, "and then the rents go up, and people have to leave and find somewhere else to stay." That's possible, but people need affordable housing right now. They need it right now. And the waiting list, we know, is a year, year and a half, two years in some cases. A lot of these people that are on those waiting lists are on the edge of becoming homeless. We know that, too. The MPT program, as it's structured here in front of us today, and these materials will not help that. You know, there's no reason we couldn't make the affordable portion, the 20% of the units, they could be affordable for 15 years, or 20 years. We could forego taxes on the 20% of affordable units for 20 years and match some of the other great programs. So empty people would get affordable places to live as soon as the project received its occupancy permit.
Do you need another round?
I do.
Okay. Anyone else? Claire?
Thank you. So I kind of have more general comments than some particulars. Mostly, I appreciate staff's responsiveness to much of what Council and others have asked to see in the program. I think we've done a lot to kind of dial it in and add value to the program. It's not perfect, and it may not be perfect even once we bring it back online, but I think, you know, even in the message we got from the Chamber of Commerce, they said, "We think this might be a little too constrained, but we're willing to give it a go and see how it actually works." And I think that we're getting to that point where we need to move forward. So, and, you know, some think it's too constrained, and others think, and probably will continue to think, it's too generous and without sufficient strings attached. But at this point, I would support moving this to a public hearing, pretty much as is, to hear from business, contractors, neighborhoods, labor unions, and taxpayers about what they want to see, or how they respond to how we've dialed in for now. Particular things, I like the explicit call-out of what can happen if any part of it is violated or not followed through on, and also explicitly naming violations of labor and other laws. I'm okay with the energy efficiency criteria that you've laid out. I actually support the fee to affordable housing. I think it gives us a lot more local control about how we fund and put up affordable housing projects. We have a project right now, in Brian Obie's project, that has a lot of affordable housing within it that's waiting for us to move forward on this MPT, and would actually get us some of those units that Counselor Brown was speaking to. I think the local hiring provisions are a good start; the additional public benefit are a good start, and the input from neighborhoods is better. I would support an idea of what, like Counselor Clark has suggested, of a scoring opportunity for neighborhood associations. I think that's a good suggestion. But I also am a little cautious around that. You know, we have to recognize that development happens in this community without MPTs, and those developments can impact neighborhoods, and while there's a land-use planning process, you know, the main difference is, the MPT helps us get housing built where we want to see it built. So I'm a little wary of loading up the program with things that aren't more directly related to the tax break, like the energy efficiency, the affordable housing fee, and those kinds of things. But I do, would not object to, and think Counselor Clark's idea is a good one. So those are my big-picture thoughts.
Betty?
Thank you. First, I have a question. I read in the newspaper that there are two big housing developments proposed. Are they asking for tax exemptions?
No, neither one of them are in a MPT boundary, and it's suspended currently, so...
It sounds as if people are being able to build without tax exemption from, I continue to think that everyone should pay taxes. And as far as saying you have to abide by certain rules, they get, be looser and looser, and people ask, "Could I just get by with this?" And they always get permission, but I think the 20% affordable housing is absolutely essential, and it should be within the project. As for losing it after, I assume that places that have inclusionary zoning, that some of the places are more modestly built, not furnished with the same luxury as the other units. And they probably would still be available; they would rent them to who could afford to rent them. But 10 years is a long time to get a break if you're trying to get, if you're trying to get a better place. I think the permanence is wrong, and to start with, the permanence of low-income housing, that people should be, we should check to see if they're still eligible, if they get subsidized housing. But I'm thinking of this not as subsidized, but just lower, something more affordable for people. If it were houses, it could be without the two-car garage, without the fancy carpet. Same thing in apartments, it could be without the dishwasher and all the extra luxuries, and maybe a smaller size. But I think that having things included is really much better for people. We talk about dispersal, but that's like, you're forced to take a whole development in your neighborhood, which is, which raises animosity, and also it marks people as being poorer people. If you have, if you have an apartment in a big building where it's a mixed income, it doesn't, it isn't stigmatizing, especially to children who grow up in knowing that they're poorer than other people. Thank you.
Alan?
Yeah, I think what we've done here is pretty dramatic. We made some really dramatic changes to the MPT program. To me, the key things that I was pushing for at the very beginning were transparency and quantifiable public benefits, and I think we've done that. I think we've done it in spades. This is not your father's MPT program anymore. It's fundamentally different. We've made really significant change, and 14 of them, and I'll just list them really quickly. The new requirements and the revised MPT that were not in the previous program. There's no student housing anymore. There's a fee for low-income housing, 10% of the tax exemption amount, was an idea that I pushed early on. We limit the rate of return to 10% by reducing the exact tax exemption term and the amount if it exceeds that. There's an energy efficiency requirement, 10% to 15% better than code. There's a local hire requirement, 50% of the dollars spent by local firms, meaning in Lane County. There's a minority in women business opportunity requirement. There's a requirement to follow wage, tax, and licensing laws, and there is a financial reporting requirement. There's a requirement in there for electric vehicle ready with conduits in place. There's additional neighborhood meetings. There's a higher density requirement. There's a basic design principles requirement. There's a volume cap of 1,500 units citywide, and there's this, a new independent citizen review panel to review all this stuff. So all in all, I think we've made really dramatic changes to this, and it doesn't resemble the old MPT program at all. And I think we have succeeded in making this much more transparent, and actually getting quantifiable public benefits for our community by having this program. Having said that, I like what we've done so far, and I appreciate the staff work that's been done, and I think it reflects what we've been talking about. I have a couple of questions or a couple of comments that I'll try to get through real quickly. One is, I don't know why I kept saying 5% to 10% of low-income housing fund. I think it should be 10%. I was a little confused about the, the, the green building thing, in that it was lead, had lead in there, and the 10% to 15% above energy code, and it was, and kind of, in the decision matrix, it said either-or. I thought, "Why couldn't we have more?"
It's basically a, kind of a menu of options. I think if you did lead, for example, there's an expectation that you would have met an energy code in and of itself within lead or, but lead isn't absolute. You would have an option to look at, target mostly on the energy efficiency, and that's, the menu of options is based on the type of product, whether it's, you know, four-story versus two-story, and there's different kind of code issues. So it's intended to be kind of a mission, a menu of options, but the primary consideration is that they meet the energy efficiency standard. Whether they get there through lead or another's method is kind of what we're focused on.
Oh, okay. Well, having a building be lead doesn't necessarily mean you get to that energy efficiency thing.
That's correct.
So I don't, I think having them both in there is a good idea, with the primary concern being the energy efficiency, because I think that's real public benefit. That's real benefits to the people who live there, because their bills are going to be lower from utilities. I'm not sure I like the automatic triggers for expansion without City Council approval or input into that process. There's these triggers that, if they happen, then these new areas get in. I think we should, as a council, obtain a little bit more control of that, and I'll need to make that.
Okay, thank you. George?
Thank you. Yeah, I too want to thank not only staff, but all the people that have volunteered their time and effort and knowledge and experience to go through this two-year-long process to get to where we are now. I think this is a great document to move forward to a public hearing. There could be some tweaking done, but, you know, that's what the public hearing will be for. You know, it's not perfect, and I think Claire said that, it's not perfect, but I think the majority of the people involved in this process are happy with the outcome. So I'm, you know, I'm willing to go ahead and move it to a public hearing at this point. In reference to the topic of the disqualifications, now, that would be on a case-by-case basis, is that correct? Because I can see, for example, putting the bid out, and for whatever reason, say, there's no businesses owned by women that put in an application on the bid. Well, technically, that would disqualify that project. So, you know, I just want to make sure that we're talking, if there is a disqualifying factor, that we look at each individual factor in, hear why it wasn't met before we just automatically disqualify it.
Yes, the ordinance would identify which failures to comply would result in disqualification. The way the current MPT program is set up, those come to the council, and the way I envision, the revised ordinance would be, it would be the council's final decision to disqualify. Other violations could result in civil penalties as opposed to a disqualification from the entire MPT, but that would get spelled out in more detail in the proposed ordinance that would go to public hearing, and then you could tweak that.
Good. And then, in reference to the questions that Mike brought up about the other areas other than the downtown, I think if you go through the AIS on, and again, the pages aren't numbered, so I can't direct you to it, but you'd have to scroll through and find it. Number six, boundary, you know, it says in here that, should the boundary include other areas that would be inactive, not yet eligible for application, and it gives you a yes or no, and then, should the areas outside of downtown only be activated after one of the following two actions occurs? And one's area planning that addresses design and transitions, and the other's the citywide code amendments that address transitions. So that would, in fact, go to the council for a decision if it's a citywide code amendment. So, I mean, not only would you have the neighborhood input, but you have the council, again, having the final say, so...
One or the, one of them, I don't know.
At this point, you know, that, to me, I'm comfortable with that.
Make it more explicit.
But that's all for now.
Okay. And then I put myself in the queue also. I too am very appreciative of the fact we've been talking about this for two years, and that what we have got on the table now, even in its current form, is considerably improved and tightened up over what we had before. I too think it's ready for a public hearing, even with what I've heard about additional things that need to happen, because I would suspect the public hearing might be helpful for us to hear what some of those improvements would be. I'm very conscious of the issues around neighborhoods. I've seen some emails around that, and I think the public hearing might help us actually craft some language that would help with that. To me, the other significant issue, there's really been two that have been talked about. That's one. The other one is the notion of, what do we do about affordable housing? And when the Housing Policy Board discussed it, we looked at, there's a problem that can be solved in a couple of different ways. One is to include the units; the other is to provide money for it. It's not as if the problem won't be solved, it's which direction do you go in terms of crafting a solution? And after we talked around it, and I was initially a supporter of the idea of including the units. I thought it was simple, it was straightforward, it would be easy to understand. But I was actually persuaded by the people that came to the Housing Policy Board, including some of the low-income folks who have been in the situations, and financiers, who have said, "You have enormous flexibility by being able to pay into a fund that then provides low-income housing. You don't have to wait for the project to be built. You could actually use that money relatively quickly." And as John Van Lanningham pointed out, it doesn't end with a term, whether that term is five years, 10 years, or 15 years. That low-income housing, once you've provided it through the use of those funds provided, is there. The notion of being able to ensure that we're all living together, some of the housing projects that I have heard about, not all of them by any means, but some of them, when they're built with a requirement for a low-income housing component, separate entrance, separate elevators, you know, you're stigmatized by the fact that you don't get to go in the front door. You have to go in the poor people's door. And you can say, "Okay, well, we'll make it so that you can't put in a poor people's door." Then you're just adding complication on top of complication on top of complication for how you're going to prevent where the natural tendency would be to go. I want to see lower-income folks mixed in with the rest of the community. That is, I think dispersal is a desirable thing to do, but you don't want to do it to the detriment of what you're really trying to achieve. And I think having a fund that people pay into, that the city can administer or to be in charge of, gives us flexibility to be able to provide low-income housing, actually in a much more dispersed, logical, and thoughtful way than it would be if you said, "This project here has to have some." We've actually opened up the whole community to being available for low-income housing, so to me, I see that as an advantage. So I would think we should move ahead to a public hearing. And the last point is, hearing about the triggers. If we could be more explicit about City Council involvement, this is certainly not going to hurt anything. Okay, round number two. Chris? Yes?
My assumption was that the area planning that this is referring to means a council-approved refinement plan, or some kind of plan like that. So the ordinance that would come back to you would provide that the trigger is something that the council actually does. It's nothing that staff would do on its own.
Excellent. Thank you, thank you. Okay, round number two, starting with Mike.
Thank you, sir. All of us recognized and asked for the opportunity to revise MPT, because each of us saw ways where we could enhance the public benefit of this program and the need for it. For me, the first thing that I brought up, and the most important part for me, was around local hiring. Now, I appreciate very much, again, staff's work on this and the input from those folks that you had, but all of my comments during this process have been around making sure that we have an appropriate way to measure, what my first request was that we have a criteria for the number of local hires in specific employees, but having found that not legal to do the way we would like to do it, I at least would like to see a transparency of the number of local people hired, not firms. And there's a pretty important distinction there for me. The people that are doing the work, and the people that are being paid to do that, have a pretty big chunk of the, you know, the skin in the game as to whether or not this is a public benefit for them. It's not difficult if I own a construction... It's not difficult, if I own a construction company in Bend, to rent a $200 office in, you know, downtown, in a little executive suite in downtown Eugene, and say that, you know, "I'm a local firm. I have an office right here in Eugene." That doesn't get us, in my opinion, to the place where we're at least showing somehow that we're hiring local people in the process of taking a local tax break from local taxpayers on this project. So, I've made a couple of recommendations that I understand many find difficult to, you know, and cumbersome with the idea of certified payroll. I'd like us to find another. And along with this, and number five, I mean, my question will be, is it time for us to go forward? I'm willing to support that, but I will have changes when we get there. Let me, if I could, say something with my last 40 seconds about number five. See, here's the thing. All of us recognized that this was in need of revision for one basic point. We see this program as necessary, but the public doesn't. The public sees this as unfair. And so, the revision, the need for revision was obvious, and we have to be clearer about public benefit even than we are so far, in my opinion. And especially with regard to number five, we have to begin to say, "Okay, the development has this kind of impact, and here's what we want to start putting in place to address those impacts for the people who live in that area." And I'll need a round three, please.
Okay. George Brown?
Thank you.
I apologize for interrupting.
No, just a quick response to the, it's hard to find, because we've embedded it in the financial reporting section, but in response to your comments from the last work session, we did provide that in, at the end of, in year one, along with the financial reports, that they would provide a list of construction, labor, residency information, so that we would actually have that data at the end of the first year, when the construction's complete. So, we did actually include that in there.
Okay. George?
Okay. Thank you. Well, actually, in contrast to what some of the other councillors think, I think most of the changes that have been made to the old policy are cosmetic and don't really get to the heart of the matter, providing, you know, on the ground, in-your-face, public benefit for the foregone revenue. I'd just like to go back to the criticism, one of the criticisms we've heard of the 20% affordability requirement was, "Gosh, it's just way too complicated. Developers would never be able to figure that out. It'd be tough for staff." You know, I have never met a dumb developer in my life, and I know several. I know quite a few, not just here, but in other places. They know how to do these things. And I've mentioned, at least on two occasions, that the Portland Housing Bureau told me that there are two developers that were successful applicants for their multi-program who would be more than happy to show any Eugene developer how to do that. And developers routinely hire consultants, by the way, and city staff routinely hires consultants for all different kinds of things. So, that argument does not hold water with me. I'd like to talk about the 10% fee thing a little bit, and I'll have a legal question for Glenn in probably round three or four, if we get that far. We've been told in here that the unit, the volume cap will be 1,500 units, whereas Portland does a yearly dollar cap. Why we went to units, I don't know. But as it stands in here, the program would end after 1,500 units have been constructed. Is that correct? That's the target goal. That's the volume cap.
That's the idea, yeah. And of course, council would be in the position to sunset the district at that time when we met that. That's the intent, yes.
Yeah, highly unlikely. I'm sure it would just go on forever and ever. Okay. Well, I get, for 1,500 units, I get 3,450 beds, at 2.3 beds per unit. If 20% of those were affordable, we'd have 690 affordable beds. I think the 10% fee is not adequate to address the need. I figured that to subsidize, or, you know, with the foregone revenue, 1,500 units, that's going to be about $30 million. That's the high end of your estimate, too. It's in the packet. The estimate was from 1 million to, you know, 10 million to 30 million. Let's say it's going to be 30 million. So, 10% of that is $3 million assembled over many years. That's nothing to address the, as far as I'm concerned, to address the need for affordable housing. It's a tiny amount. It's token. If the beds are provided, that's a completely different matter, and I will need another round.
Okay. Alan?
Yeah. I haven't been very supportive of MPT. In fact, I voted against most applications, but I think what we've got are some real public benefits here. I think that the, the one, the potentially $3 million for low-income housing is very significant. That's $3 million we didn't have before. The 10% for energy efficiency, 10% to 15%, results in real benefits to people living in those units with lower energy costs and lower bills. The local hire policy of 50% of the dollar volume, I'd like to see it be jobs, too, but I think that got kind of cumbersome. And after talking to Paul Hovey, that became very problematic, I think, since he's been working on that at the state level. But given some of the recent projects that we've seen and what they've done, I think a 50% local hire in terms of dollar volume is a great, great benefit to our community. On regard to the trigger, there's, it's an automatic thing if two things happen. One is that if the, if you get the area refinement plan, and I get that, that requires the city council action. But the second one, citywide code amendments that address transition between commercial, multi-zone property and single-family properties, if neighborhood organizations are satisfied that citywide code amendments address their concerns regarding, they can request MPT activation. Does that require city council action?
Well, I think-
Or is that just a neighborhood requesting that they be included?
I think the planning effort would be something to be codified by, and approved by council.
One, the number one.
Yeah, that's the first part of that. The second part of it is, through that process, we would engage the neighborhoods, and if there was support for bringing MPT forward from the neighborhoods after that planning, that would be a council decision whether or not to activate that MPT boundary, based on what we've heard from the neighborhoods, basically.
I think we need to make that more clear, because this says, "One of the following two actions occur," and I think we should be, I would be very explicit that there's council action that's required on both of those, and maybe we can come up with some language to do that.
So, the, again, what you're looking at is sort of the English version of what the ordinance eventually will accomplish. The language in the ordinance will be a lot more specific, and it will be explicit that in order to activate a new area, that it does require council action.
Okay. Great. I also think that neighborhood meetings need more teeth. I like the idea of putting it in scoring. I don't understand why we didn't leave the option for low-income units in there. Is that, can you explain that? Have it be, pay the fee or have, and have the developer pick it? And if they want to do the units, fine.
Yeah, we could. I think we were following the recommendation of the Housing Policy Board. I think the assumption really was that the fee provides a really flexible source of funding that we don't have. The federal home funds, for example, they've really tightened up how you can use those, and we are really questioning whether those funds are going to be used in the future like they have been in the past. So, having a local source of funding that we really leverage to build affordable housing, so we're not the only funding source in those projects, having that flexible sources of funds is very valuable, to the point that we would want to encourage the fee and the expectation that we didn't really believe or think that the units were actually going to be developed into the projects, based on what we've heard from developers and affordable housing developers. It's very challenging, so that's basically why it wasn't put in. There's probably no reason why it couldn't be in there, though.
I could post it to the Housing Policy Board before final approval. Just bring it back as a question.
Well, I proposed the fee because I didn't think the low-income units would work. It's not been very successful in Portland, but it's potentially could in the future, so I would like to see us put that back in as an option. Regarding the fee, though, at the bottom of the page on number seven talks about, for example, the fee could be used to, for the home program. And I think that's something that we should really actually nail down, what exactly where that money is going to go. Do you have any specifics about how we could do that, so that it is actually very specific about where the fees end up?
We weren't very specific, because I think the, one of the attractive features of this fund is that it'd be flexible and opportunistic. So, it would be a source of affordable housing funding that we could use when the need arises, and we don't really know what the need quite is yet, because it could vary over time. But having that flexibility of a funding source was kind of what we were focused on, rather than identifying it for a specific use that maybe we don't even know, because three, four years from now, when these funds start to come in, the need may be different.
Is it, is the language sufficient for that? If it says, "Used for affordable housing," that it can't be used for anything else? Kind of like the road fund can't be used for anything but roads?
Right. The ordinance would include language that says, "When people pay this fee, it will be, in essence, treated the same as road fund dollars," so that it can only be used for affordable housing purposes, as the council determines what those purposes are.
Okay.
You need another round?
Another round, thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in round two? Then we'll go to round three.
Claire.
I looked at, the language actually says affordable housing or emergency shelter. So, I don't want to, for us to forget that piece.
Okay. Great. Round number three, Mike.
Thank you, sir. Whenever council takes an action, there are oftentimes some members of our community who resent some piece of it. I resent paying a nickel for a paper bag, for example.
Never heard that.
Yeah. Right. But what we want to avoid, I think, is the creation of any kind of policy or ordinance that gets large numbers of people resenting. I think MPT is a very dangerous sort of ball to juggle for us, because so many people resent it. I'd like to see us, I'm ready to forward this to a public hearing, but with the caveat that we've only just started to talk about some of the changes I still think it needs before it's ready to cross that kind of threshold where most of the public doesn't resent the program. And I think that's the important standard we need to get to, where most of the people who are reasonably well-informed about its purpose and understanding what it's for don't resent the idea that this incentive exists. And we still have a little more work to do. With the piece around number five there that I mentioned, not only should we have the affected neighborhood associations, and if there are more than one, if a particular development touches two, then both of them should be involved. Not only should they have an opportunity to score that project and give us that, but as I mentioned, the list of, of kind of impacts that are of, in a priority order, most important to them. And the reason that I think that's important is the other part that I've brought up a couple of times, and I'd like to see us start, being able to offer SDC credits towards the developer having the opportunity to address those early and upfront. As our system stands, we fund the necessary changes and impacts to things over a CIP that can last for, you know, seven, eight, 10 years before the impact of development really gets addressed in infrastructure. I think this can provide us an opportunity to both address those things early and give the neighborhoods a better sense and a better feeling about the kind of development that happens around them and its impacts. And again, I guess I'll bring those forward after we've had a public hearing on this and do that at the adoption.
Thank you. George Brown?
Thank you. I'd like to go back to why I believe the 10% fee is no good. Can you tell us how you landed on that percentage, 10%?
What we, we made a proposal, and Councilor Zalinka asked why 5% or 10%, and that was one of the kind of decisions that we were seeking some input from council as to where you would want to set that fee. So, we talked to the Housing Policy Board. We talked a little bit about the fee, and I believe their recommendation was 10%, if I recall. And, you know, talking with developers as to, how much could we reasonably clawback without losing so much benefit that no one would use the program and nothing would get built? So, it's basically from a series of discussions with the Housing Policy Board and the folks that are on the ground that potentially might build a project.
Okay. The reason I ask that is Core Campus received a MPT for $4.4 million. And they voluntarily, before we voted on it, I imagine they were probably a little worried, maybe unnecessarily, as it turned out, that maybe they might not get approval. So, they volunteered to pay back to the city $900,000 of their exemption. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Yes. That's 23%. That's 23% of their exemption, not 10%. That's almost two and a half times more, which, of course, showed me right away that pro-formas are very fungible documents. And I know that developers and their lenders and their equity partners oftentimes, they spend, although they spend a lot of time going over the pro forma, and they keep changing it. And you can manipulate a pro forma to show that you need X amount of dollars, and if you, and you can get, you can bump that up and make a credible case, and then you get a huge exemption, but you're only paying 10% on that extra money, and it bumps up the profits quite a bit. So, I'm real skeptical with 10%. I just don't think 3 million over many, many years is really going to, it's just going to like a drop in the bucket, as far as I can see. Now, I've got another question, and I have a, all right. If we go to number nine, which is project need, it's not paginated, I don't know what page it is. It says, "If the projected overall, the projected rate of return is greater than 10%, the term of the exemption will be decreased by the number of years necessary to bring the rate of return down to 10%." I think that it's safe to say that nobody's going to turn in a pro forma that will show them making more than 10% in any given year. I haven't seen one yet. Well, I think one of them was 10.1 in one year. What happens if the actual rate of return exceeds 10%? Because the staff will be monitoring on a yearly basis their return on investment. Is that correct?
That's correct. And the primary, one of the primary rules for the review panel is to truth the projections. So, the idea is that you'd have some experts at the table and adjust those projections as they're presented. They wouldn't just be taken at full value. There's a truthing process, and we've always done that on the staff level. In this case, we would hand that over to get an expert panel, so to speak, or some expertise on the panel, to help us true those projections, so that they're just not taken at face value. There is not a clawback provision. You know, we considered that early on, if you recall. Very complicated, very hard to get financial statements, because they can be, you know, loaded in with expenses. You could accelerate some of the expenses in order to reduce your return, so that you would never get to that 10%. There's a lot of things that are, and it would take a kind of a complicated auditing system that we really aren't geared up to do. We'd have to contract out for that work. So, we considered that, and that's why we end up with not a clawback provision in our criteria. And frankly, I think that would really make it hard to use from the user standpoint, and I think that would maybe even scare away some of the opportunities that we might have.
So, if I understand you correctly, you're not, it's not- So if I understand you correctly, you're not, it's not anticipated that staff will monitor the actual rate of return?
We would, and there is a reporting requirement, and the, the purpose of that really is to kind of look at the program on the aggregate and decide, is it still needed? Is it certain, is it still needed in certain areas? Student housing is a really good example. We've reached a conclusion that we no longer need to assist and invest in student housing. So that information would be available to, to staff and to the panel and to council on the aggregate, not to disqualify past projects, but to look forward and decide, is this program working? Is it still necessary and so forth? You need another round?
We'll need another round.
Okay.
The second left?
Yeah.
Okay, Alan?
Yeah, I initially wanted to have a clawback provision as well. The reporting requirement we put in there is to benefit the future program as opposed to going back and adjusting the term so that the ROR, the rate of return, is not to exceed 10%. We're not doing that. I think that got too complicated. I'd still like to see if there's not a way to do that. If, if the initial projections of costs and expenses and all that turn out to be completely off-base, which I don't expect them to be, but then, then we should be able to, to, to adjust the term so that it doesn't go wildly into high rates of return, because that's not what the program's all about. I'd love to see more than 10% if we could, if we could do that. I'd love to hear a public comment on whether or not a 15% or 20% to low-income would be a good idea. So the last question I had is on, on section nine, where the additional public benefit criteria. If you don't get the full 10 years because your ROI, ROR moved the term back, so say maybe you got eight years, you can add in these public benefits that are listed in here, and, and by, I guess it's, the city manager can make a recommendation that they, because of these, they add years to the term. I'm kind of worried about that provision being used to just increase the term without real public benefit back to the city. I don't know that our, our list of public benefit criteria are all that nailed down and refined to make sure that we get real public benefit back to the community. And I guess there's a sentence in here that says, "The additional public benefit criteria would not be scored with the intent of providing flexible menu of options to maximize public benefit based on individual location or neighborhood factors." I'm not sure what that means or how that actually works.
Yeah, originally, we had talked about a scoring system for that additional public benefit criteria. The problem is every neighborhood's unique, every project's unique, so we don't really know what the needs of that neighborhood are going to be. It might be open space. It might be wider sidewalks. It might be something else. So the idea is, again, working with the panel, working with the neighborhood representation on the panel for some of those additional public benefits to come forward as specific project elements for that project. And if those things cost more, they impact the pro forma, and, you know, if it's a design element, you know, we want brick instead of wood, for example, that there's a real cost there, and that impacts the bottom line. And maybe we would want to grant a longer-term tax exemption for a higher quality or open space or whatever that public benefit might be. So the idea really is, again, use the panel and the review, and ultimately, council gets the ultimate decision as to where that, that benefit line is and what the, what the extent of the tax exemption and what projects get approved.
Yeah, it seems really mushy to me. I'd like it to be much more quantifiable, much more nailed down. I'm not sure I really like that provision of this at all.
Okay. Betty's the last one in round three, and then I will ask to put the motion on the table before we go to round four.
Thank you. I think it's round two for me, but if you, I find it almost laughable that we give them 10 years without taxes and they give back 10% of what they, what we saved them. I think if we, if we, if they paid all their taxes, we could use 50% for affordable housing if we wanted to, or use it for railroad quiet zone, or use it for sidewalks, use it for any of the things we need if they paid all of their taxes. I wanted to respond to what Mike said, too, about when the people don't resent it, that will not happen unless one of two things, unless they don't know what we're doing, and that's a possibility, or if we offer the same thing to everyone, if they want to upgrade their homes, or if we offer them a way to get years of tax exemption. I think everybody would like to have it for themselves. But I don't think we'll ever get people to accept the fact that some, that they are paying taxes, is struggling to pay their taxes and hold on to their homes, and somebody else is not paying for 10 years. Thank you.
I now ask for the motion to be put on the table.
Oh, is that my job? Move to direct the city manager to schedule a public hearing on an ordinance to modify MPT program revisions consistent with the criteria included in attachment A.
Second unwillingly.
It's been moved and seconded. We will now move to round number four with George.
Well, I'd like to speak to that motion.
Sure.
It's too early, first of all. There's, this is not nailed down. The shape is, is, it's coming together, but I believe there's still quite a bit to go. But I want to go back to, go back to this idea of the 10% fee. So, you know, I'm, I'm really kind of, I'm looking at other program requirements, financial reporting. I look at, there's nothing about if you go over 10% return on investment. I think that needs to be in there. There needs to be a provision. Portland has it, and if you, if you go over 10% return in that year, any year, then you have to pay the, the excess back to the Portland Housing Bureau. Now, anecdotally, I will tell you that the Portland Housing Bureau is so happy with the provision of the 20% affordable units, they're not that picky about the developer making more than 10% ROI in any given year, and they don't challenge it. But they have that in there that they want to see. They want the financial monitoring. And if we don't have that, there's no, there's no teeth. I mean, the, the financial reporting, it's, it's like, okay, fine, they turn in their report, but we don't even check to see what their actual, not projected, return on investment is? It's meaningless, you know? So that's, that's got to be nailed down. I'd just like to go back to the, the Core Campus. You know, they, they turned in their pro forma and showed they weren't going to make 10% any given year, but then they volunteered to kick 23% back, so that their, their pro forma was already, you know, kind of doctored. And this is, this is what people do. They play around with them. Now, I'm not saying that, and then that, you know, in and of itself, that's not necessarily a bad thing. I mean, you have to, you have to look at different scenarios with your lender and your equity partner, but this can be gamed. This can be gamed and without, without staff, you know, a deep look at it, and if you don't know how to do it, hire someone to do so because, you know, we're talking about $30 million in foregone revenue over the years. That's a lot of money. And I still have my legal question for Glenn. I don't think I can squeeze it in this round. I'll need one more round or half round to do so.
Okay, Mike?
Thanks, sir. I will vote in favor of moving this forward, but I wouldn't want anybody watching this or listening to us to be confused. This will not be adopted as it's currently presented. The staff has done a fantastic job for a long time, worked very hard to make this a better program, and all of us have put our pieces in that we think are important to make it a better program. But I am quite certain that after we hear from the public, we will make changes to this, and it, and it won't pass as, as currently presented. I think that's important to make clear because to my previous comment about people's resentment in this, I agree with Betty. But one of the things we'll, we'll risk is there are those who are in active discussion of putting this on the ballot as a question. And I, I don't believe that would, you know, that this program would survive such a vote. And I think all of us, or most of us, or some of us, recognize this as important to a couple of, of our, our city's long-term plans for development. So we, we need to revise it so that it meets with an appropriate level of public support that we can maintain it in good, in good faith. So I, I will look forward to the chance to, to add more to it in the debate and the process of doing that. I would suggest that we schedule a fairly lengthy amount of time for the process of amending this at the, at the point of adoption.
Alan?
Yeah, I'm willing to move it forward to a public hearing because I want to hear what people have to say at this point. I agree that's going to change, and I would like to see some changes. I've talked about them already. So my vote to move it forward, to hear what people have to say, it shouldn't be construed as a vote for this proposal. I think we still need some time to, to work on it and make some potentially significant changes to it, but.
Okay, we will now move to round five. George?
Thank you. Okay, I have a question. You know, we have two developer, two major developer incentive programs in place here. One is MPT. It's suspended now, but it may or may not come back, MPT, and urban renewal districts. MPT is, affects all the jurisdictions in the form of foregone revenue. And by all the jurisdictions, for the people listening and watching, I mean, Lane County, Laney SD, 4J, and the City of Eugene. Urban renewal districts is a form of diversion of tax receipts from all the, all the jurisdictions. Supposedly, both of these programs benefit developers directly. And Lane County, and 4J, and LCC, and Laney SD, and the city have all supposedly agreed to these arrangements. So my question is, I don't know that they've all agreed to forego their shares of the 10% kickback or recovery of the foregone tax. And I don't know if that's a legal issue or not, but it just occurred to me when I was thinking about this that they might ask, rightly in my opinion, why does the city get it all? Part of that tax, that foregone revenue belongs to us. The city shares about 45% of the foregone revenue, and the rest would go to these other jurisdictions. So is this something we need to think about? I mean, is this, I guess what I'm saying is, do we need to get their permission, or can we just go ahead and do this and say, "Look, the developer's going to give us 10% back of the revenue that we're not asking them to pay," which would have gone to all the jurisdictions, "but we're going to take 10% of it for exclusive use." I'm just wondering, do you understand what I'm getting at here?
I understand the question. It's not something that I have researched, so I'm not prepared to give you an answer today, but I will take a look at it and then get back to the entire council either before or by the date of your public hearing.
All right, thank you. I appreciate that. I think it's, I think it's essential.
Anything else?
I think that pretty much covers it. Thank you.
Okay, that ends round five. So what I will do is see if there's any final discussion on the motion on the floor. Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion as presented signify by raising their hand. All those opposed? It passes four to two, five to two. And I believe that takes care of our business for today. Thank you.
I have to pound the gavel.